All right. How are you all? I recognize a lot of faces, Valley and Ginger Cove faces, so I appreciate you all being here. Mayor, we have the mayor of Valley here with us too. Mary, thank you for being here. And chief? I'll promote you though. We'll call it a federal mandate. So, well, as you know, what I like to do is just want to hear what's on your mind, what you think are the important issues, answer your questions on whatever issues. As I've been out and about the district, as I call it my purging the poison time, back home away from DC, the last few weeks in DC were pretty interesting. I'll just say pure hell. Your dad probably went through some of those periods. Steve McCollister here, his dad John Y. McCollister was the congressman until 1976. So, and I still keep in touch with John Y. So, but what I hear mostly from people is jobs, economy, and spending. Spending is a little bit tied because to the debt ceiling right now, and that's the discussions. I hear both sides. Why didn't you just do a clean CR? You're being hypocritical. I'm just paraphrasing some of the comments. Others said you didn't do enough. We're all over the board, but I want to hear from you. So firsthand up, you get to go.
It seems like Congress put about 50 ridiculous bills together, well, 45 ridiculous bills together in one, and there's probably five that could be good. And if you take those five out and review each one of them individually, you could go through them in an hour. But because you tie all the other crap, pork barrel stuff together.
On one bill.
On one bill. If you have 10 issues, you're going to have 10 different answers on how to go. But if you introduced each one separately, you could go through each one in an hour real quick. But the problem is you've got 10 issues and somebody's for them, somebody's against them, and all the way down the line. So you spend all this time doing that when you could, if you went back, you talked about it, but you never passed it.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Did everybody hear that about putting multiple bills together and then forcing the up and down vote on the package? I will say that in the last six months, there's been a real effort to avoid doing that. There's been a couple of occasions where it has. One was on the continuing resolution where the whole point of that was to tie everything together. So that's definitionally putting everything together. And then on this debt ceiling, the whole deficit reduction agreement was put in there. So that did have several sections. But we've tried to go regular order because we do think that is abusive. And regular order, by the way, means the bill goes to committee. Regular order means subcommittee, committee, then to the floor with full debate. And that's the way every bill is gone, so I'm proud of that. It takes a lot longer to do it that way. But I think it's what democracy requires is that you go through the intended procedure and have the body work its will. So if it gets amended in subcommittee, if it gets amended in committee or on the House floor, so be it. The committee or the Congress should be able to work its will. I don't want to sound partisan, but we went through a couple year period where bills came directly from the Speaker's office, they bypassed committee, there were no amendments allowed, and you had straight up and down votes. So if you look at the number of bills that the House has passed, and I don't have the direct number, and the number of votes we've taken, it's record breaking. We'll have votes on the floor on amendment votes. We'll have 20 to 25 votes in a row on amendments. We haven't seen that in years. So we're working towards making sure that regular process works. It's ugly, it's messy, but it's absolutely the right thing to do. One bill at a time is absolutely the right thing to do.
I'm going to change the subject to the bill, but I'm real curious about your stand on that pipeline and why you wanted to force that.
Oh, I'll repeat it.
Going forward into November because it doesn't cost Nebraska people anything to have them move the aquifer. Now, I have a ranch three and a half miles where they're proposing putting it.
Okay.
Okay. Sand Hills is totally unbelievably wet. It doesn't cost us a dime to move it, same amount of jobs, that oil is going to Texas refined and sold on the open market to the highest bidder. So I just want to know and want to understand why you pushed that.
All right. He's talking about the Keystone Pipeline Bill that I did in Congress, and I'll give you the big picture here, the total long answer here, because I think a lot of details are necessary to completely answer your question. When we, I'm on the Energy and Commerce Committee. I'm fifth in seniority on that subcommittee, maybe fourth in seniority. We were sitting around in our subcommittee meeting in January saying, look, energy means jobs. What are some things we can do where we can get the energy sector up and running and working? Obviously offshore, Gulf Shore was an issue, getting permitting so we can get more drilling rigs out there instead of them taking them down to Brazil. Keystone Pipeline was another one that came up since I was fairly intimately knowledgeable about the issue because Nebraska has become, no point in, pun intended, the line in the sand on the Keystone Pipeline. The big issue with the environmental community isn't the sand hills or the Ogallala Aquifer, it's the product that's coming through it. So for them, it's an excuse. You as a rancher in that area may have a different, but the overall national environmental scene is no tar sands, no heavy crude, no pipelines, no coal. I disagree with all of that. So here's, that's my philosophy on energy now. So here we have a pipeline that the environmental study has been done, the supplemental requested by EPA has been done. It's sitting there in two more weeks or three more weeks, it'll be three years. The typical pipeline approval, transcontinental pipeline is 16 to 18 months. And what we have seen the EPA do is exactly what they did in a letter is drag their feet because the people in charge of the EPA right now, in my view, my belief, would do everything they could to kill the pipeline. Not move it, but kill it. So what we did is calculated the number of days for the State Department to do all of their reviews, all of their town halls, receive their comment period. We gave them 45 days on top of that, and that took you to November 1st. So rushing it, I don't think would be the right word considering how long it's taken and all the science that's been done on it. So I wrote a bill that just basically said the decision has to be made. So State Department, by November 1st, you have to give your recommendation to the President, and the President has to make a decision. So that's what the bill does.
Senator Joe is wants it moved, Ben Nelson wants it moved. Have you looked at that?
I looked at the science. I looked at the environmental report. I looked at the supplemental that said that was safe in the.
It had 12 leaks in less than a year.
What do you, okay.
What's already been built, 12 leaks?
He's saying there's been 12 leaks on another pipeline?
No, on the one that they're, the one they're already building that's gone to North Dakota.
Yeah, that's the Keystone Pipeline, not the XL.
And they had a 60-foot geyser on this guy's ranch that they didn't catch.
Well.
And they were going to bury this in sand. So when you have the fastest oil in the nation running through the finest pipe buried under.
Well, you know, they changed the pipe.
They now can be thicker?
Yeah. They went to the standard, not the new.
No, there's a road not far from where his property is. It's called the sand road that rarely people even drive on because they get stuck on it because the sand is so deep. So they were out there this weekend surveying over that road. Now, if no one drives that.
See, now I know why you didn't want to talk to me when I came up.
And you have the aquifer underneath, there's a leak, the oil's running down into the aquifer. It would take so much oil to even rise to the top of that road to be seen that thousands of gallons would already be in the aquifer by the time anyone even knew it. And I talked to the engineers of TransCanada, and I asked them that question, like, how are you going to check for leaks? And you know what they said? Any leak that was discovered, they could be there in five minutes. Five minutes. The closest airport is Grand Island if you kept a helicopter there, and it would take an hour to get to where they were surveying. An hour of oil filling. I don't, I can't even imagine how they would even check it. They would have to position people along that pipe that live there.
Well, there's a new pipeline safety bill. First of all, I, there's been two studies done. They've all conformed to all of the EPA's requirements and the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Agency, and so I've got to go with what they're saying. And they'll make those recommendations to the President, to the State Department and the President.
If you would just go out there and look at that land and that sand and think of burying a pipe carrying oil in that sand and what it's going to mean if that.
Well, you know, there's others out there already. Some are 30, 40 years old.
Right.
And I'd be more worried about those.
Well, and also.
Because their pumping stations are a lot further away, and that's how they determine is when the pressure between pumping stations drops, then they know something's happened. The bill that, the pipeline safety bill is what we're calling it. We've already done a subcommittee markup on it. We're going to go to full committee. It goes to transportation. And we're looking at doing a, right now, there's no criteria of how soon they have to be at a leak. Of course, they want to get there as fast as possible because cleanup, more of a cleanup is more expensive.
Right.
And that was one of the recommendations of the, after the first environmental study is put more pump stations in so there's a shorter space between. We're saying that you have to be positioned to have somebody on site to shut it down within one hour.
One hour of leaking into the aquifer.
But right now, there's no standard, and the industry standard is four hours.
Right.
So we're cutting that down dramatically.
At the same time, why can't we move it off the aquifer to another direction around even Nebraska? Why are we trying to help out TransCanada who's not even selling us the oil when they get it to the Gulf?
Well, that's absolutely false. That is. I've met with refineries that are adding on, and the pipeline's going to go to them. They wouldn't be spending a billion dollars extending their refineries if it wasn't going to be used by them.
No, I'm saying it's going to be, they're making the money on it, but it's not, it's sold to the highest bidder after it's refined. Is that correct?
Well, the refineries pay a market price to buy it. So it'd be either under contract or on a spot market to the refinery who's buying it.
Because my understanding was it's on open market and it goes to the highest bidder once it gets there.
You have contracts, they pay, just like if you have a contract for corn, you pay that price.
Right.
You can call that open market because at the time you lock it in, that's the price or on the futures. So I think, we're both right when we're saying it's open market, but you're thinking open market as it's going to China.
Yeah.
They're building a second pipeline to the West Coast, British Columbia, to put on tankers to China already. So this 700,000 barrels of oil is going to come to us, which by the way, nearly offsets Venezuela in heavy crude. And I'd much rather buy the 700,000 from Canada than from Venezuela.
I agree. But should we move it north of the aquifer and?
We cannot.
Can they?
Can they? Yes.
That's, well, then, that's a win-win, right? We've not compromised the aquifer, we still.
Well, then you compromise groundwater on the other side of the state. But see, I'm just saying there's water everywhere, but I agree with the Ogallala Aquifer. But we can't, we've asked them, they just won't. They said, we've already spent almost a billion dollars so far trying to get this through, and we're not going to go back and start all over again and fight the same fight. Because for you, it is about that land right there. For everybody else in the nation, it's about stopping the pipeline, so.
Oh, stopping.
So if they go back, they're done. They're not going to go through all of that, is what they're telling us when we're saying, why don't you just move it?
Are they bluffing, do you think?
What's that?
Are they bluffing?
No, they've invested way too much money to be bluffing.
35% of our oil comes from Canada right now.
Yes. And they've got a lot, and we're, by the way, now since we're on energy, I'm writing a comprehensive energy bill to get us totally displaced from OPEC oil. And a big chunk of that's going to come from within the United States. It's, and a big chunk of that's going to be natural gas. We have, it's almost every quarter, they're finding huge new pockets of natural gas. So if we can move more of our transportation to natural gas, that's less we have to buy. And the sweet spot, by the way, is fleets. So I've been working with fleet operators, natural gas companies, to find out what we need to do to start moving straight trucks and fleets to natural gas. I'm working with the American Trucking Association and semis. That's the next ring out would be semis. Now, I'm going to tell you, how many of you want to buy a natural gas car? You can't, there's not any on the market. There's one, but it's basically only sold in California. I don't think the American public is really going to buy natural gas cars, so the sweet spot is trucks. If we can get 30% of our fuel off of imported oil into US natural gas, that's a lot of jobs, that's a lot of money that stays in, and we're not sending over to the Middle East to fund the Hamas and Hezbollah and Al Qaeda reps and whatever else.
The biggest problem is with the distribution.
Hey, Joe, did you bring my prescription? Oh, no, I picked that up yesterday, never mind.
One of our neighbors, they're back in 1950, used to drive the car with them.
Yeah. You know, they, learning automobile history, actually, the earliest cars were thought it was going to be natural gas. And then gasoline just became a derivative or throwaway item that they started throwing in cars. And then after World War II, all is history with oil. If you ever want to read a fascinating book on the history of oil, I know you're dying to. It's a book called The Prize. It's only about four inches thick. Did you have something, sir?
Yes, in concert with what you said about the pipeline, I'm almost sad to see our medicine cabinet, the Ogallala Aquifer contaminated with oil because it will probably, certainly will be. That's the history of these things. EPA not understanding the deference to all of the studies that are made, common sense prevails here.
Okay.
I feel like the Ogallala Aquifer is our medicine cabinet. The hospital has a physician. The hospital, every household is dependent upon water. We're not dependent upon their oil, we're dependent upon the water. Let's stick with the basics.
Okay. Just to throw out a little bit of, I don't want to get into a debate with a physician. Lawyers tend not to want to do that without, but there's so many pipelines over the Ogallala Aquifer, including oil pipelines right now. I know of one that's over 30, almost 40 years old. And frankly, as an environmental concern, I'd be much more worried about a 30-year-old pipeline than a brand-new one. And so we, I'd rather have them swap out. Yes, sir.
Something along that lines. Will there ever be a point in time, do you think, that we can get to a world of the Alaska wildlife refuge? I know all the environmentalists say it's going to ruin Alaska, but you look at Aliaska Pipeline that was put through, and it hasn't, and at least, and above.
Pardon?
Yes, it has, because they congregate in the wintertime.
Yeah, caribou like warm.
And at least if the pipeline is above the ground, they can shut it off and show it order, unlike BP out in the Gulf that took months to shut it down. And I don't know why the environmentalists are so opposed. Seems like they have a stronger voice in government than the mass majority of the people do.
Well, they are very strong, there's no doubt. And I think the vote on the Keystone Pipeline, when we had, this is just fact, and you interpret it any way you want, three Republicans voted against the hard date to make a decision, and about 60% of the Democrats did. 40% of the Democrats voted with me. But that, the reason why that's an interesting political science vote, which wasn't my intent here, is the biggest proponent of building this is the AFL-CIO, the Teamsters, the Pipe Fitters, and the unions. That's their big deal because it's all union work, it's a union contract. And so, still a majority, pardon?
Correct.
What's that?
I mean, after they.
Well, the construction jobs will be done, but the refinery jobs are three times, four times the amount of contractor. And they are supposed to use local houses, so will be Nebraska union guys out there because I met with them for the first time. I haven't met with a union in like four years, and they want to come to my office and talk. But anyway, political science, still, the majority of the Democrats voted on the environmental issue, not the union issue. So it's, to answer your question bluntly, I have voted several times to open up ANWR for safe drilling with the newest techniques, strictest cleanup rules, the whole nine yards. I would say that it is very, very unlikely that you will ever see ANWR opened up. Very unlikely.
Even when we make it to the White House, the President.
ANWR is the litmus test. And so we had three Republicans, you'll lose a lot. Right now, I got you. You can put your arm down, you're next. One of the other items that was on our agenda of how we could create, further in the North Sea where the drilling rights have already been leased, Shell did all of the work, got the permit, and then it was withdrawn from them. And here's the basis that the federal government withdrew their permit. They said, we're going to have a new standard on greenhouse gases. And it's a total life cycle greenhouse gas. So when you have the boats that run the equipment out or run them in back and forth, and all of those have to be calculated back in, and they weren't before. So they pulled their permit over that and then sat on it. And so even in the North Sea of Alaska where it's been open forever, they're stopping leases from going forward. So that's going to be the battle before ANWR is. So Steve? Oh, I'm sorry, you're next. Yeah, you're next. Because you were really enthusiastic, even behind this pole, I could see that arm going.
Yeah, talking about jobs, and everybody knows that's the thing, right?
I hope so, that's.
Pretty obvious.
Thank you.
Now, the President is going to present to Congress on September 10th some type of a new program. Now, if that program is an all-out job program, should we deal with bridges and roads, maybe schools, a bit of a maybe delta situation, would you vote yes?
Well, I reserve the right to read the bill. I am already on a.
The general.
The general I support. And let me, let me throw this out to you because I'm already on the transportation bill, which is a five-year authorization of federal highway, bridges, and mass transit, and bike trails, and all the other stuff that's now thrown into transportation bills. I'm already a co-sponsor of that. So yes, I support infrastructure. And I believe that the Constitution, if we want to go back to the Constitution, which I like to do, Article 1, Section 8 says postal roads, which are basically the 17th century or 18th century version of highways. So it is the role of federal government to build infrastructure. So the issue is, how is it going to be paid for?
I thought maybe that's what you were going to bring up.
So what would you suggest?
I would suggest borrowing your money.
I think we're going to have to be able to get the economy going.
Well, I wish the first stimulus package that was sold as an infrastructure bill actually had some in it. So.
It was all tax, a lot of tax?
Not in the stimulus.
A lot of good tax cuts.
Well, yes, sir. And then Ward.
I'm a businessman. Every businessman that I know is getting fully on to their money for it, most of the time Obama's been in office. Because what's happened with this administration is that an incredible amount of risk has been introduced from the Obama investment. My own personal opinion is that the key to creating jobs is not spending more federal money, it's creating a more certain environment for making investors, right? If I look at other investors around the world, many of the international markets are doing well, they rebound. The United States is not rebounding like international markets, in part because there's an incredible amount of.
Well, Europe has tanked to our level.
Yeah, Europe has gone down, but like she talked to people in Germany, German companies booming.
Yeah. Canadian.
As far as to China, right? But the investors that I know, right, they're looking at Obamacare and all of the risk and uncertainty that that introduces. They're looking at the incredible amount of debt the government is taking on.
Yeah.
And the uncertainty, especially around taxation, that's the issue. They're looking at some of the things that the environmentalists are looking at and pulling through, like the debt. And it's all of this uncertainty, against that backdrop of uncertainty, no one wants to invest. Everybody's just holding on to their money. And to me, that's the key, that's the thing I don't think our President can.
The, well, he's been told that. He's had meetings with business. I'm doing a, 30 businesses in 30 days in Omaha doing tours, including Valmont, and 3M hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I hear that in every business, large and small, in the metropolitan area. It's the certainty, and mostly it's tax and healthcare. Because they, and what they say is it's not only the uncertainty, but they say, you know, I can afford to hire right now. The other certainty is the economy. I don't want to have to go through firing or laying off another employee because I had to do that already, and I'm not going through that again. Some people may think it's really easy for employers to let somebody go, but it is really gut-wrenching for them. And I've heard that several times. The other is just, I don't. The other is just, "I don't, I don't know if I can afford another employee, because I don't know what my tax bill is going to be in two years, and I don't know what my healthcare repay or, or costs are going to be." And until we can resolve those issues with some level of certainty, the, the business community isn't going to have the confidence. Ward, and then you, sir?
I would just like to make a quick statement, the lady back here who said borrow some more money. I'd like to make an observation here in the room. Those people under the age of thirty-five years old, raise your hand.
There's two.
Every American right now, man, woman, and child, share of the federal debt is $200,000. If you want to leave this country in worse shape for future generations of people, just continue to borrow and spend more money, because we will bankrupt this country, it's happening now. Do not borrow, do not spend any more money. Uh, I would encourage you to be a fiscal conservative on that issue, and just one quick question for you.
Yep.
Is Speaker Boehner a fiscally conservative congressman?
Yes. Keep in mind what his alternatives are when you're dealing with Harry Reid in a Senate and the White House. So he doesn't get to evoke his will. Uh, let's see, Steve? And I, I know I promised you, but I forgot Steve had his up for a while.
Uh, confidence level in our nation is as low as it's been in thirty years with huge disapproval ratings of both Republicans and Democrats.
Oh, you had to bring that up.
The stock market is in the, is in the tank, the, uh, the people that I talk to just shake their head about the, the feeling of the situation in our country. They say our country's in this worst shape now, as it's, it's been their, their memory. What do we do about that?
That's a good question, Steve, and believe me, as a guy with, uh, that's part of a group with either an eighteen or a thirteen percent approval rating, uh, I do think about that. Uh, so, what do we do about that? Well-
Confidence levels-
We could have not argued, and we could have just let the debt limit go up by 2.4 without any, but then that really wasn't the right thing to do. Um, let me, I, I think we deserve it, first of all. I think it's been an ugly process. Uh, I think it's a process that's ended up pretty much in the middle on both the CR, where the President didn't get all what he wanted, we didn't get all what we wanted, so we ended up with it looking bad, uh, because we were kind of the egg yolk in the middle of two pieces of bread. It looks really messy, and it was. We look like something that we can't get things done, but we have one ideology in the House, we have a completely different ideology in the Senate. Uh, we saw what happened when there was one ideology in all three, and I would submit that, you know, having intense discussions on issues instead of, you know, four hours of debate and passing a 2,000-page bill was, I think it's better that we have the mess. The last thing I want to do, Steve, is any way impede true debate. We need it, the country deserves it, yes, it doesn't look good, the issue to me is the civility. It's not that we're debating and debating intensely, it's the language and the rhetoric. Uh, you know, you offer something and the next thing you know, you're unplugging grandma, when there's nothing in there that even comes close to that. That's the type of stuff that we have to stop in this country. I'm one person, Steve, you're a good friend, you know, you know me personally as well. When I go up on the House floor, I am talking principles and facts. I don't call anyone's integrity into question. I compliment the other side and tell them we just disagree, because here's how we disagree, point one, point two, point three, backed up with facts. That's honest debate. Now, here's my other, I'm just going on my soapbox now, because this bothers me. If you watch on C-SPAN, the Total Debate, you will see ninety percent of it is true, honest debate. The other ten percent is the uncivil, name-calling, you know, you're going to, Republicans are going to kill everybody in Medicare, or Democrats are going to do, you know, they're the ones killing seniors. That little ten percent, or even maybe less, is 100% of the news coverage. Uh, so you, the, the people get to watch the car wrecks. If you never saw cars on streets making it safely, you would never know, watching the news, that cars ever made it anywhere safely without someone being injured. Unfortunately, that's politics today. Uh, so that's, the only thing I want you to keep in mind is, are you seeing the real debate on that thirty-second or fifteen-second news clip? So I promised him next.
I just want to make one quick comment. I heard him today say, to people in Iowa, how much better off we all are since he was elected President.
That will be an independent, independent decision. That will be an individual, uh, conclusion, yes, sir?
Um, I appreciate your comments about civility and, um, open debate, I think that's good. Um, I wanted to talk about the, um, budget, and I think it is really important that we get our financial house in order.
Yes.
Um, and, um, but we are going to need, um, a lot more honesty and cooperation from Republicans. Uh, one thing that, that you in particular, and Republicans in general, have been really fond of doing is, um, saying how, how the Obama administration and the Democratic policies have, you know, just bankrupted the company, the country and all of that. When, you know this, that when you came into office, the deficit, the, the debt was five and a half trillion.
Yep.
Before Obama was inaugurated, it was eleven trillion. And this was during a time of prosperity, during a time of Republicans pretty much having control of the White House.
Yep.
And pretty much both, both parts of Congress. And so I, I just think that we need to not be all, doing all this grandstanding and soapbox, uh, soapbox, uh, talking.
Okay.
I appreciated your, your talk about, um, honest debate, and I think that the Republicans have to own that they were the first ones to double the national debt, but you don't hear any of that. They had the wars off-book, off-budget.
Still.
It is not, no, um, it is not off-budget, it, it's, it's in the budget.
Well-
So, so I, I, I just-
There is no budget, so. There isn't, I'm sorry, there is no budget. So, but-
Those numbers, those numbers are now on the books, and they are counting as, as part of the deficit. During the Bush era, they were not counted as part of the Bush deficit, and that was added to the debt, not counted. So you can say, "Oh, well, the, the deficit was 200 billion or 400 billion when Bush was in office." It was 200, 400 billion, plus all of the extra things that were, that were off-book. And President Obama did indeed put it off, so, so there's, there's a more, um, accurate and open, um, accounting. I'm, I'm just saying-
Okay.
You, you know that you have been a part of doubling the, the national debt, and I just think Republicans need to cooperate more and be a little more honest.
Okay, I'll take that. Yeah, I, two, two counterpoints and then one, taking it to a, a, a different direction, though. There's no doubt. Uh, the wars were off-budget, but part of the deficit and national debt. Um, and I voted for those wars. Now, when you look at a lot of my votes, I voted probably seventy-five times to cut the budget, so I think I probably have a more unique, personal Republican stand, because I've actually got a record of being able to show that I was trying to reduce everything by five percent, ten percent, voted against the omnibus bills, even, whether, uh, the President, uh, Clinton was in charge, or Bush, or the current ones. If you're wrapping them all together, I'm voting against them. Uh, so I've got a little bit of a personal history where I can defend myself, but I will accept the criticism of the Republicans. And I even said on Voorhees' show the other day, Republicans have to accept responsibility for the amount they put into the debt. Uh, and the only way, I truly believe this, the only way to force fiscal sanity on Congress, regardless of which party, has the majority, is a balanced budget amendment. And so, it, do I have confidence in Republicans several years from now, after we get an agreement to get things under control now? No. So I want a balanced budget amendment, by the way, just let me, uh, under the debt ceiling agreement, the Senate and the House have to bring up a balanced budget vote by the end of October. The House will probably do two. Uh, then the one that gets the highest votes will go to the Senate. The first one will be, uh, the more austere supermajority, uh, to raise taxes, it'll have a cap with the percentage of government budget to GDP at probably eighteen or nineteen percent. Um, and then with the usual language about exceptions for wartime, uh, with the supermajority vote of Congress. That one will get a majority, but it won't get the required two-thirds. How do I know? We've already had a vote on it. Uh, so, the second one will be a, what's called a clean, uh, it doesn't have the, the cap or the supermajority, it just says, "You got a balance. Your expenditures can't exceed your revenues." That's the same language that's in the state of Nebraska Constitution. It's the same language that's in the city charter for the city of Omaha, maybe even Bally's. Um, so that's the language that we think may get to two-thirds, and may even get to two-thirds in the Senate. So, um, I'm throwing out, not a campaign, but an issue. Uh, if you know senators in other states, I think Ben Nelson has already said he supports a balanced budget amendment. Uh, Joe Hans is already on record saying he supports both of those. Uh, so if you know people in other states, call them and tell them that Senator Harkin needs to vote for a balanced budget amendment, or whatever else. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm the most fiscally conservative person you have ever met. I've never bought anything at the centerhouse that I couldn't pay cash for, including cars my house pays, where I don't pay any interest on my credit cards yet. Our debt is a long-term problem.
Yes.
And I do, if we're going to all want to cut, we got to stop and say, "What are we going to cut?" Because everybody thinks cutting fine, and tells us they're cutting, and tells us that's them. And I pay Social Security, being called an entitlement, I have paid into that for forty years, and for you to start telling me you're going to, "I'm not going to get my Social Security in a few years," really bothers me. But I think our number-one problem is jobs, because without jobs, I don't pay taxes, I can't go out to the movies, I can't-
I agree.
We got to work on jobs, and every time you say, "Cut, cut, cut," you've just cut more jobs. And that's more people that are going to get unemployment, you can't get ahead. Study history, look at our history of recessions, you know how we died out of them, not by cutting, but by controlling. So every time I get a-
Yeah, oh, I agree.
I want to know what you're going to cut, and are you going to help create jobs by every time you cut? I have a daughter who works for the Homeland Security Department, woman, she's worried about her job. She says, "I'm worried Republicans get in, they don't want to spend money on Homeland Security." She's already looking into other jobs, she's keeping us safe. You got to ask, "Where do you want your money to come from?" Because nobody wants to come from there.
Yeah. Uh, believe me, I hear nobody, I, I, the first five months of the year in DC is filled up with twenty meetings a year, or a day, each with different groups, and each one comes in and say, "We know that you need to cut, but this program shouldn't be cut because..." The reality is this, we are deficit spending 1.5 trillion dollars a year. We have to get that under control. It is, in my view, and many economists' view, uh, you are not going to be able to grow the private sector until you can get the deficits under control and stop growing government. Uh, government in my-
Jobs have already been cut in public, in the public sector, Obama, hundreds of thousands already have cut a lot of jobs.
I, I, I would respectfully disagree with that.
That is absolutely correct.
That-
Now, when you look at the job growth, the reason it is bigger is because of the public. How many, how many teachers have left their jobs? I just substituted last year with a guy from New Jersey, he said eighty-eight teachers from my school left because they cut jobs. Public, public schools are cutting, public jobs have been cut. Now, what about raising revenue? Republicans will not even talk-
Okay.
About millionaires helping out a little bit more and becoming what they've done so well in the past ten years.
Here, I'll tell you what. Hold on, hold on, timeout, timeout. Hold on, hold on.
We're, we're borrowing the top 100, we're borrowing $120 billion a month.
Hold on, I'll call on you in a minute, but, but I, I would prefer that the comments be to me and not to each other, because that's when things tend to get out of control. Uh, so-
All right, not off, not off the beaten path, I'm a mailman from Omaha, I'm a, a union member, I'm a, a state officer and-
By the way, he's one of the unions that's not on the Keystone bandwagon here.
The postal office is in trouble. I don't know if you, you, you like your mailman, if you like the real carrier, uh, what are the, which way-
You have a lot better approval rating than I have.
And, and we're trying to work harder to get it there, but, uh, I, I just came here, I was sent here by our National President to inform the public a little bit about what's going on-
Good.
-in Congress. Uh, we've got a, there's a bill, uh, it's not a bill, it's HR 1351, it's in the House, it'll be up when you get back from the break. Uh, 1351, we've overfunded our health and retirement benefits fund, $55 billion. That's something that-
And we thank you for that.
Yes, and, and we, this is not the first time that's happened, we've got some of that money back.
Yeah.
I'd also like to thank Representative Lee Terry for his support. Uh, we had a bill up there, uh, HR, uh, 137, uh, it was guaranteed the six-day delivery for your mail. Uh, he, he was a, a, a cosponsor of that bill, and I appreciate your help on that.
We'll see what happens.
We've got 1351 that's coming up. This is to get this money back to make the post office solvent. Uh, the post office has been bleeding money for years, they're on the track, but, uh, some of the, uh, the post, new postmaster now, Donahoe, uh, is kind of on the wrong track, and, and I'm sure, I don't know if you know Representative Isaac from California?
Isaac, I know.
He's got a bill, 2309, HR 2309, and he wants to slice and dice and cut the post office and make it a three-day delivery, uh, a, a week, which will cost, what the post office wants to do is slice 220,000 jobs. And, uh, right now, the post office is the biggest employer of veterans, as, as, I am a, a disabled veteran from the Vietnam War, and I've worked for the post office 27 years. Uh, the post office is the biggest employer of all veterans. Uh, and we need our jobs, we're in, in, in public, uh, we're in the public view every day, I don't know if you know your mailman, or if you knew him or not, but this is what we need, we need support from Mr. Terry on this, uh, HR 1351, to get this money back. If we get that 55 billion back and put it into the post office, we'll be solvent for another five, 10 years. And maybe this will pick up. But that's why we're here, to educate the public about this money that's been overfunded, that the Treasury has already spent, and they don't want to give it back to the post office, obviously. And so, we need this money to be solvent, but, uh, and anyway, I'm going to have a private discussion with you, I hope. And, and on this, but we'd like to educate the, uh-
Bye, Steve.
-the public a little bit on there, and there's a article in the, uh, Public Post on Saturday that our state president wrote, addressing this issue.
I saw that.
So I don't want to take up too much of your time to know you, sure, everybody has their own issues, but I just would like to bring my issues forward.
There's a lot of complex issues, uh, and post office is one of them, because, uh, things are changing- changing quickly and dramatically, and how this is all gonna sort out, no pun intended.
No, but what are your opinions on the closings? They have these closing for the...
Yeah, I specifically didn't make a comment on that, because at this point in time, if we can still deliver the mail in a timely way and still...
If we get this money back.
Well, we would have to, I'd really have to look at that, because if closing those and we can still have you delivering cost-effectively and pare that down, then, you know, I don't think you want, I don't wanna say any of them are dead weight, because I haven't looked at them, but if, if they can make you more leaner and efficient, then it's not five years of economic stability for you, but maybe longer.
You've got some of the fat off the top.
Won't disagree with that one either.
The oldest people on rural area get their medicine.
Oh, yeah. Don't tell Joe the pharmacist that. Yeah, he doesn't like that mail stuff. You go to Joe's. You go to Valley Pharmacy. This gentleman, then you.
Well, no, I'm just gonna say real quick, if it helps you, the lady back here, I suggest you go stop and see Warren Buffett before you leave town. He volunteered when I was to pay, you know, more tax on it and stuff like that, so I figured I'd go get him.
I really want him to donate a billion to the University of Nebraska. I don't necessarily want him to give it to the federal government.
Well, no. Maybe I'll play a little question.
Yeah. I said billion, not seven point five million. Yes, sir.
I'm a business man. I'm in construction.
Oh.
Business thing, dude.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're in a tough industry, brother.
I think this is hard as it lasts a year after being with my family business for years. Right now, I'm paying eight percent unemployment insurance on my employee that's coming out of my pocket. That's an unfunded mandate from you guys. So are we gonna extend more benefits so I have to continue paying that eight percent? That's more than I paid for matching Social Security and Medicare on my employees. That's the highest rate they have. I have never laid anybody off, but I have to be there for another year because of my experience rate. So right now, I know you're not here for career counseling, but after listening to a few government employees, I'm wondering, should I stay in the private sector or go to work for the government? Because in the private sector right now, what we're also dealing with, OSHA, the DOP, the High Water Patrol, especially in the construction. So can you enlighten me a little bit on crisis funding?
Are you flooded?
Huh? No.
You said crisis funding. That was the only area that I could come up with.
I'm talking about all these...
I have met with several contractors.
OSHA that come out, thank you, that come out, and there, if you haven't noticed, there's a lot of people getting pulled over lately. I mean, you see a lot of people, a lot more people getting pulled over than used to be. And that's by the High Patrol, that's by the DOP. We have a lot more business with OSHA. And I asked somebody, I said, "What's going on?" Because they tell us, "All that money goes in the general fund." I said, "Well, why the increase and all this? Because it's not coming back." And I was enlightened, I think it's crisis funding if they create a crisis in the area?
I don't, I've never heard that term in that respect. I will look into that. I've met with a lot of contractors.
What we find out is that we're getting busted.
They are picking on Nebraska. I have talked to the Association of General Contractors and our home, National Home Builders, and they say they are hearing this in spots. Now, what I'm understanding is that Nebraska, they're picking on us because there's actually some building occurring here. So, like Moz to a flame, it's OSHA to Omaha. And I'm hearing many stories about OSHA. For example, there was a home builder, same to you, but more of it. He's giving me the hand signal of how much time we have, but, for example, in one of the few homes being built in the metro area, there was a step ladder leaning against the wall, two guys having lunch, OSHA walks in, evidently having a ladder against the wall is a violation, even though it wasn't being used and they weren't near it, seven thousand per employee fine. There's a manufacturer outside of Omaha, actually in a different congressional district, but I did a walkthrough of it about six months ago, fabrication business. OSHA came in there and fined them. The only violation they could find is that the OSHA manual was in a, was not in the employee locker room where it was supposed to be. It was in an area where he set up a little lounge area for employees and put a computer where they could get on a computer during break and search their emails and put it there. That was a five-thousand-dollar fine. There's a drywaller in town that got fined forty-two thousand dollars, was it? And so...
A lot of money in construction, but it's stolen.
Well, if you're, it was a framer, not a drywaller. The new rules that OSHA's putting out for, for home builders, by the way, you have to be able to tie off above you when you're roofing. Yeah, thank you for chuckling. Where are you tying off above you?
Duh. See, that is a problem because you actually got cheating. Framing is, we're setting trusses up.
Yeah, the trusses is a big issue.
There's no place to tie off.
There is none.
And I built a house here about a month ago, and to be honest with you, it's the first time I ever built a house that felt like a criminal, because I'm looking over my shoulder because I'm wondering what I'm doing wrong. Because what they told us at the meeting is that you do it, and we'll come out and look at it, and if you're doing it wrong, we'll fine you. And if we fine you enough, you'll figure out what we're talking about.
Yeah.
But what kind of rules are those?
Well, and it's just a different attitude from what I've seen OSHA, even when I was a lawyer or early on in Congress. It's a, it's a real gotcha attitude right now with them.
Do you have an OSHA director in town that's looking for Baker Johnson in Washington?
It's, I think, actually the edict is coming from Washington down to him. And our entire delegation is well aware of that, and we have requests for meetings with the top people.
Well, besides the bank, that's another way to kill off.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people over there. I think OSHA's got a few more new pickups, because the first few guys slapping their teeth on the counter, saying, "That's all I got left to take to pick up."
Well, there's just so much activity that's occurring now. Yes, I'm gonna let you go next. Yes, ma'am?
There were people concerned that went to Israel. Are you telling me, did we, the taxpayers pay for that?
No. No, you did not. That was the freshman class. That is paid for by a group called APAC, American Israeli Political Action, although it's education. They don't donate. What they do is they pay for trips, then they go and see what Israel is about, meet with the Knesset members, meet with Netanyahu, those type of things. I went on that trip when I was a freshman. I have been overseas twice in my twelve full years, Baghdad and Jerusalem. That's it. I've been to Montana, though. Yes, sir.
Social Security, this is probably a sore subject with a lot of the seniors. When do you think the government will start using factors that are true representation of the true cost of living? It's my understanding that food and energy is not factors in the cost of living, that some extemporaneous crap that they use, it isn't a true representation.
Yeah. Ward, do you, what's the terminology? It's the effective rate of inflation or whatever, that's some term like that. And because of the volatility of food and fuel, they extract that out. I'm stunned by that. I think that should be factored back in for cost of living. And while I've got you here, let me put to rest several of the emails I've gotten over the last week or two. We did not vote ourselves a pay raise. The only vote we took was to freeze our pay. If Social Security isn't getting a cost of living increase, neither are we. If our veterans aren't, neither are we. Federal employees are still getting theirs, but we're not. So it's one small step of an alliance here, but, yeah, that amazed me. I had to sit down with a local economist for him to explain why, but that is real. They take food and fuel out. What's driving the inflation rate right now is groceries and fuel.
Food and necessities, of course.
Yeah, and what's, but they are volatile. Yes, sir.
You know, I'm for the balanced budget amendment, but I'm afraid if we, we've got unintended consequence that might happen if we don't quit spending money, that just gives us, you guys, free right to taxes as much as you want.
Yeah.
Am I right?
You'd still have to vote to...
If you put up a budget and don't quit spending, you're gonna come to us and say, "We got this balanced budget amendment."
Yep. And here's, because I went through this on city council, I understand the mentality. For most of us, to come back to our constituents and say, "Jeez, we just want to spend more, and I'm gonna raise your taxes to do that." What do you think's going to happen?
They're gonna do it.
Yeah. And so that puts in a level of accountability that doesn't exist right now. My version, that I drafted four years ago and introduced, had a three-fifths margin to raise taxes. So I felt, I wanted to make it difficult to do that, but the one that's likely to, likely, may get sixty-six percent. It'll pass with sixty-six percent in the House. It's the Senate that I worry about. So, yeah, but there's accountability in there where there is none now, and that's a great step in the right direction. Yeah, Ward.
Real quick, would you support an amendment on Social Security that said this? Anyone over the age of forty-five will receive all Social Security benefits that are coming to them. Anyone under the age of forty-five years old will not receive Social Security, but must still pay into it to pay for the elderly. However, when they get to be sixty years old for their money that they've put into their IRAs, that would be tax-free. And if you study what the country of Chile did in nineteen eighty-one, they privatized Social Security, and their economy is booming. Would you support doing something like that?
Yeah, that's it. You mean making your IRAs tax-free, so it's not only, taking that out, that's...
But you still have to pay, I still have to pay my...
You still have to pay yours in.
But I'm not gonna get it, but when I get to be sixty and I retire, all my money's mine.
That's a, that is a new twist, Ward. So you spend a lot of time late at night thinking these things through.
I got kids.
Yeah. But that's, that's interesting. One thing I will say, and this is partly for the lady in the nice peach salmon-colored sweater, orange, I'm a guy. You're lucky I didn't call it purple. Anything that will happen to Social Security will not affect anyone that's middle-aged and up. It's that system's there, there's no way they can pivot to something different. So any changes to extend the life of Social Security so it's solvent for our kids will be done so, at a lesser age. That's what I'm saying.
I just don't want my children to be subjected to Social Security.
Yeah.
I want them to be independent, self-reliant Americans. It's their responsibility for their retirement, not Social Security. It's their responsibility for their own healthcare, not the federal government's. I mean, you're a lawyer, I know that you pull out your dart here, copy the Constitution, and nowhere does it say healthcare's the right, Social Security's the right. It's just not there. I want my children to have their own shot at it.
Yeah. That's an interesting twist. I like that. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I just wanted to, since you're on a conversation, do you think...
Energy and Commerce.
Whatever.
Whatever. Yes, I'm on a committee.
Help me out. If we're talking about infrastructure, you're saying you would be in favor of...
Yes.
Building bridges, building bridges. How aware are you, not just of the federal issues, the federal roads and bridges, but we own farms in Saunders County, because it's west of here. Saunders County has no money to repair bridges between farm places, but what they have done is they have put a road close to finance every single bridge.
Wow.
And so my husband, to go from one field to another in his tractor combine, is at personal risk if something happens, does he crosses that bridge? Because that is effectively, they say, you know, keeps them from being liable. Saunders County doesn't have the money to repair the infrastructure. That's not, and that's very true of many rural areas in our country. As a nation, what are we doing to look at that? Look at how those kinds of infrastructures are being funded? Is there any real global perspective of everything that's going on and what the needs are?
Boy, that is a really good question. And I'm gonna disappoint you with the answer. No, is the answer. Feds deal with feds, state deals with state, counties work with state. And so how those two work together, I can tell you, between state and federal level, it's oil and vinegar. I mean, oil, yeah, that's right. See, I'm getting my salad cliches mixed up, but water and oil.
They're full of substances.
Oh, wait, that was a bad one.
Than they've ever done, you know?
Yeah. They are. And we're seeing that across the country, we know that. One of my thoughts would be for the feds to get rid of their responsibility, move the eighteen point four cents of every gallon you put into your tank as federal gas tax, move that to the state and let the states do it, whether it's your road between farms and bridge or Interstate eighty. I just think it could be done more effectively and efficiently, therefore cheaper, if the states can control that. Now, here's the issue there. Does that also include tolling? Can they start tolling Interstate eighty? And they would say, "If you give us the responsibilities, we have that right." But if they're using the money not for general, but for reinvesting in the infrastructure, then maybe we can agree to that. Why are you doing that to me? One last question. Mason?
Thank you. This gentleman here was talking about economies going on over Europe, and I mentioned to him Germany, which they still have tariffs. Tariffs have helped them continue with manufacturing, even though they do not use as many people as they used to, but it brings money into the government. And here, with our policies in this country, I believe we do more free trade treaties coming on board than anything else. Why don't we take a look at having tariffs on merchandise coming in to see how we can create more jobs because you can't bring in a lot of goods, it's gonna be more expensive, we can manufacture them here cheaper and put people to work?
Two points to that, Mason. Number one is, looking through my history of the Great Recession, what put us on that road was a Republican initiative on tariffs, the Smoot-Hartley Act. So I worry about what that would do in our econ, to our economy if we aren't allowed to ship. And by the way, being a little bit parochial, agriculture is the big winner in these trade agreements. So we benefit in the state of Nebraska from those trade agreements. Number two, it shouldn't be about tariffs. What we need to look at is the layer below that. Why aren't our manufacturers competitive? We've got the best educated workforce, we got the best, hardest-working, I think, at least in the Midwest, compared to the Chinese. Why are we losing manufacturing jobs? It's because of the rules and the regulations and the taxes. We have, especially if you're in hazardous materials, if you're manufacturing a chemical, you cannot do it in the United States anymore. We have gotten to the point where, like OSHA, I'd tell this story, I'm, I know, settle down, guys, I gotta be in Waterloo for their, that's what you're talking about. All right. They have their city council meeting, and I'm attending. Uh, they have their city council meeting, and I'm attending it tonight, but, uh, so anyway, there's a manufacturer in Auburn, Nebraska. Uh, they make parts. They have a perfect safety record. Last year, OSHA sent them a letter. So, the owner of this manufacturing employs about eighty people, opens it up, says, "Hey", reads the first paragraph, or the first sentence, "You have not, uh, you have had no reported incidents in three years. Therefore, we're auditing you." And, of course, they pull all their employees in, they have to sign authorizations, they have to turn over all of their medical records, they go to, OSHA goes to every hospital to see if any of the employees have been there for, uh, uh, emergency room visits. Six months later, he gets a nice little letter saying, "The investigation is closed." And he comes to my office and said, "They don't do this in China. I can move there next week. They will build me a facility. Can't you guys understand what you're doing to manufacturing?" And I have that letter framed, I even offered it during, uh, one of our hearings on manufacturing. We need to be, the bottom line here, we can do a lot of things to make us competitive, where we can start exporting more, and not having to import so much. That's what I'm gonna focus on, is how do we get us competitive? And taxes are a big part of that. So, well, I need to get off to Waterloo City Council meeting, so thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, too.